Here and there and everywhere, including my husband, who never goes anywhere. I am delighted, but I have to again tell you how much Paula Burke has meant to this council of aging. I've been with the board for eight years and not as chair, but almost. And have gone through personally two or three or four different council aging directors. And nobody has touched the seniors the way Paula has.
Well, you can see that in the way, I mean, the senior scoop will tell you that that's what's going on for sure. I just want to clarify, you said that thirty percent of the town atopso is over sixty.
Right.
And you think you're serving about forty percent of that thirty percent.
That's pretty impressive.
That's pretty good numbers.
You know how many people are registered, right?
They're all registered, so you know how many people you're serving. We can figure it backwards easily.
Like I have statistics here, let me, this is just a quickie.
I don't want to get down a rat hole here. When we spend money on COA, which I think is generally speaking considered money very well spent, it helps tremendously if you're only serving six percent of eligible people. We feel very differently. When you're hitting, pushing up towards half, that says you're providing something that's really core to a significant part of the.
That people want.
Yeah, so.
And the budget for them is a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, which is amazing on a per program hour basis, that's, well peanuts, right?
I think it works out to point, I think it's a point oh six or point six-two percent of the budget and we're impacting that number we just talked about. I do want to mention, so one thing Kevin and I talked about in one of our early discussions was about transportation. And I, that's something that you and the FinCom has supported so that we can provide service, extensive service during the week. And it surprised Kevin how busy our bus is. Because that wasn't necessarily the case in Beverly where there are different options. But people really appreciate that personal service. They know the bus drivers. They know they're gonna, you know, get well taken care of and they're riding people that they know because we're bundling appointments. And I will reinforce that it is streamlined and it's on demand. We don't have bus drivers sitting around waiting for calls. Everything has to be called in ahead. We have someone that works locally and so he can work a split shift. He might work a couple hours in the morning then go back out in the afternoon and we're not paying him for all that time in the middle. So it's really as efficient as we can do it, but it's a very, very valuable service. We are taking people to dialysis appointments, whether it's the bus or volunteers, dialysis, cancer treatments, you name it, we're getting them there.
On that subject, could you just speak to that one line item that's essentially a twenty percent increase, which is fifty-one, one forty van driver wages? What you doing with that?
So that one, actually I was gonna ask about that because we did the increase in last year's budget. And then I think, yeah, it showed up. I'm glad you brought that one up there because I actually, that stuck out for me too. Because I was pretty much rolling everything over and maybe that's what it was, is that, oh, I think, is that it Catherine? Like if it was an over item last year and now it's part of the twenty-one, then it looks like a big increase because it wasn't, you know what I'm saying?
No, because it would still be in the appropriations part of it. It would still, it would still be in the FY twenty appropriation if it was over guidelines last year that got funded.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we'll get a chance here, we'll look at it, just, we don't have to.
Yeah, that might need to be cleaned up a little.
Yeah, it's plenty more, yeah, okay.
Because the explanation just says that it's a pay raise.
Yeah.
Step level.
Yeah, steps and levels should work with that.
Right, I mean, the bus drivers are a great weight.
Unless the demand has gone up so much that in addition to that, and that's where having, how the breaks down.
We're more at you for sure.
Excellent. Just moving on to the last bit, Public Works, if you turn to page twelve. You're all done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Did you get your email that I sent? You got the, you got the handout?
Thanks to the team.
Yeah.
That's right. As good as our weakest link did.
And I'll, just to let you know, I'm on the agenda for Monday because I have two new people coming on the board.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Thanks Paula.
Thanks for your work.
First line at the top, storm water management, that's a statement for the position. Dave Bond previously had a, and will continue as his appointment runs stand with fiscal, if I understand it. No increase there. You'll look, go to the next one, highway department, salary for the highway superintendent. Due to Dave Bond's longevity and how long he was in that position, he was a higher step. I think he was maxed out at the eleventh, so Gary started at step two and we'll be seeing an increase to a step three and that reduction of fifteen thousand is reflected.
Just going back to the public works, under the storm consultant, we only spent two thousand six hundred in FY nineteen. We appropriated ten thousand the following year, but still have only spent two thousand. Are we expecting to spend, is this similar, there's a large expense coming in this spring for eight thousand?
There's a, it's Pond Street, this is where I return to Gary, but I think it's Pond Street that there's a grant that's been received to do some improvements to the culvert there. And as well, in addition to that and some other projects internally, external projects that come in.
It might be Cross Street.
Cross Street.
Cross Street, I mean, the culvert will clean up.
Okay, so they're expecting to spend.
And then in addition to that, you know, that's, he is consults with the planning board and with ComCom as well, based on the volume of private projects that come through. I know we do have a couple of projects that are sort of hanging out there that we're aware of those in size.
Is this a big fund?
No, this was a couple of years ago, this came on, it was when Martha Morrison was on the board. And it was a change in the law and they just picked the number of ten thousand dollars as a source to fund it and it hasn't received. I mean, I think, yeah, but it was funded in FY eighteen and possibly seventeen too when it wasn't spent. So it's something that, you know, unless there's specific things, they couldn't get it in terms of a place to pay the deduction.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, it seems kind of high, you don't have a history because.
Right.
Because part of the reason is that in the case of a particular development or private, somebody doing something, they'll be responsible for paying for the consultant. So most often we may use a consultant, but we're not taking town funds to pay for that. But there are occasions when we may need it for our own purposes, something going on within the town like a culvert or something of that nature. But if it's a project, somebody's doing a development project of that and they need stone water management and the board is concerned, the planning board is concerned about the data, they can say, we need to have a consultant look at it and it's a responsibility to develop, pay the cost of that consultant.
I guess it'd be interesting to find out what that is. It's two years running where it's jacked up five times what it has been in the past.
Oh, yes, it would be.
We can certainly take a hard look at it, absolutely.
Well, it's the kind of thing you could easily reduce it to five thousand or pick an arbitrary number. And if something came up that was bigger.
After talking with more.
After, if there's something specific she has in mind, then that makes sense. But there was just no backup here to say why we're running at such a high level.
Yeah, in this case, it was, it was the fact, exactly, it was level funded. In this case, we collectively take a look at it. I'll talk with the right people, we can probably reduce that one.
Yep.
So highway department, I've mentioned the transition and the reduction in the cost. You'll see longevity still stays at seventeen fifty, that's because Gary has been on long enough. Just in a different role that longevity carries over. You'll see the administrative increase on the step to eleven for Henry. That's reflected there. And then the longevity for Gary, when he was a foreman, is reduced in allocation. So instead of two people, longevity of. Anything else on level funding?
And nothing is requested that is over guideline.
That's right, correct. Moving to show and ice, again, level funding means God, ninety-one percent for salary wages.
It's actually voted as a one number of the two fifteen on that. And we were increasing it to two eighteen just based on, did some analysis of the history and then the idea was to just leave it at that for the next few years going forward. It's not one that you want to change too much because once you go up, you can't go back down.
You can't go back down without not being able to do death respect.
Yes, yeah.
Light, I poked around that one a little because the number we have budgeted, it's a very specific number. Right around a few dollars more in some cases. We actually disfavored some of the light changes, LED lights, some of the retrofits that will be taking place. That'll actually be reduced if anything, but as you can see, the actuals line up to that pretty accurately. The rubbish collecting.
So the sum of substances, you're happy with the twenty-six thousand?
Yeah, I think we.
Well, previous years, you can see it's pretty much a lot.
And it was always underfunded. Last year was the first year that it got money in the budget, yes.
We bumped it because we were behind.
And that, I believe, concludes our line for line assessment of the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year. I'd ask selectmen, selectmen, next steps on this, you know, we've gone through it. We've obviously flagged, think we're gonna make some adjustments, we'll get some further back for you. But next steps, we have, the FinCom will start, will begin meeting with our department heads on Monday, the twenty-seventh. And they'll continue to meet for the foreseeable future on Mondays. But if there's anything we want to, you know, we've talked about some things that we haven't really landed in a different direction per se. If there's things we want to discuss further, make some further decisions.
I think we should schedule a meeting possibly next week because the ball is rolling fast. This has been exquisitely valuable to me. I missed one of them, but the ones I've been here have been fantastic. And if we can kind of figure out the things, I've got things circled, but maybe we could reduce this, maybe this, maybe that. And we're gonna get a little more information. Maybe we could have a conversation focused on those areas where there may be opportunities that we would like to propose get reduced.
Sure.
So for instance, that ten thousand down to five thousand, if it's okay with Martha, kind of a thing. And there's a couple of others. Have that conversation as our next piece so that we can start to hone in on some numbers. We've all been taking notes and we're all gonna have some things, what about this? Can we do that? Does that make sense?
Sure. Yes.
This thing is the next place and that gives you input from us.
I'm sure that the FinCom.
Does that push back onto the thirtieth one?
I'm wondering, that's by point.
I'm sure that the FinCom would appreciate whatever input.
It will not be back until the following week.
Do you want to submit? I don't know how much we can hold you up if we wait two weeks.
Well, I don't want to, don't hold up waiting for me. But I'd also be interested in, you know, potentially phoning in on it too. Can you think about that?
Yeah, what I would suggest, if it's possible, if you have time Dick, if you could at least give us a list of your concerns so that if there was an issue for, for us, we couldn't connect with you. We want to be sure that your concerns are at least something we can talk about, ideally with you present to, if that's okay.
Catherine, how long, how many weeks are the FinCom meeting? I know you help keep that scheduled.
Well, they meet, they'll meet every week, the February, March, and then they usually add some lights on as well. I mean, we really got the schedules set. By the end of March, when they're starting to vote on it. But I'm just thinking, well, today's the twenty-third, if you're gonna meet again during that time, we'd probably be looking at the third, February third, or fourth to be putting out the next version of the budget.
With our sort of collective.
The changes that you want to make.
So let me ask a question. I'm just wondering, first of all, how critical it is that we get this in before the next version? I kind of like this so that there are sort of scheduled versions and then these accountings of what's been discussed in between. I find that very, very helpful because these can kind of accumulate and then we'll see them all represented. I think that's an excellent strategy. I'm also thinking the advantage of having Mr. Gant here with us and I'm wondering if there's any possibility of going out. The next week after is gonna be tough, but I'm wondering, is there a possibility of us meeting? And I was actually gonna suggest Wednesday, you'll be back Dick, won't you, by the third, won't you?
February third over here.
Okay, so the question is, we have a BOS meeting on the third. I'm gonna be out of town on the February third.
We do?
The third? I thought it was the tenth.
The tenth is the next board meeting.
See, this is the problem, I've got to go through that list, okay.
I'm gonna be in Dallas on the third.
How long are you gonna be in Dallas?
That's the day I get back.
That's the day I get back, okay.
I'm gonna cheer the.
Yeah, our next board of selectmen meeting is the tenth, so, I mean, in February.
What I would like to do is ask whether the fourth or fifth is doable for us to have a working session to talk about the line items that we, you know, want to raise questions on. Obviously, we read our consensus.
Yeah.
Again, we're trying to.
Right on, absolutely.
React to the FinCom, we want to be proactive.
The FinCom is gonna appreciate any input we can give them.
Well, I think if we can point out some things where we say, gee, can we lower this? Look, when there are other things we say, you know, we think we should add here, so.
And I'll let, I can talk to John Gredo and just give him an update on sort of what our, our plan of attack is to get that updated, V two out.
And they're welcome to come sit in in our meeting. I mean, I don't want to be exclusive about this. I know getting them here is sometimes stuff for meeting on the afternoon, but. So the, but I'm basically wide open on the fourth and fifth, so I'd like to leave it to the rest of you.
I don't care.
Tell me when, okay, you're okay.
I just have a one o'clock on the fourth. And actually eight-thirty to twelve-thirty on Wednesday.
How long on the fourth do you think your one o'clock will last?
It's short, so I could do two.
Would it make sense if we meet? We're two o'clock on February fourth, if that works, I can make that work.
Sounds good.
I can do that.
Catherine, would you be part of that?
Unfortunately, I would not be able to make that meeting. I could do the first.
You trusted.
I could go with.
Trusted him, okay. So on the fourth at two PM, and this way if it ends up going a little longer, we're still not kind of kicking into supper time. So, okay, great, I appreciate that very much.
Because Catherine, do you have all of our comments that we've said? Or do you need us to send anything along so that they're all aggregated in your most current document?
In terms of the comments regarding fixes and the presentation things? I have those, other than this, on this list is what's going on in the last section, which is the transfers in and out, and then also in the library.
Okay, so anything that we've talked about is captured?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
For, right, things up for debate though, any item where we.
Right, like you can highlight because you know which ones.
Just the, more like the fixes, like the police holiday, I mean, that was submitted as police holiday overtime, but their intention is police holiday regular.
Right, those can be fixed, but like just using, for example, the storm water consultant for ten thousand.
I made a note of that, but I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have, I don't have all those. Like, do you have, like, the thing?
I did make notes, but they might not be a hundred percent comprehensive to everything that you might have pointed out or had a discussion on. There are certain things that I flagged because of some, like five thousand down to ten, that's one I marked for the holiday on the grid to get more information, for example.
Okay, do you want us then to send over anything? I would have to go back through and see if there's anything incremental that I wrote in.
That would probably be a good idea.
Okay.
Does it make sense for us to try and sometime, at least before that, to collect our known concerns? Not that it means you can't bring up something else at the time, but I'm thinking if we send it to you, Debbie and Kevin, and you kind of made a list of all of them and then send it out, we can all kind of look and you could indicate where more than one board member, you know, say, you know, say, yeah, they have questions about this. I think it gives us a bit of a sense of what we'd be facing, it would help us budget our time. The advantage of doing on Tuesday is if all happens, breaks loose, it's potentially Wednesday. But I love the idea of being a little ahead of the game on this if we can.
So just.
Is that doable for folks?
Yeah, that was kind of what I was trying to get at, whether we had to send the notes over because if you didn't answer the wrong.
I'm sorry, I should give you more credit for that.
No, I just didn't say it clearly, but just in case, there's a lot of discussion going on.
Now that way we can prepare some information on certain, if we need to make deeper, like I said, the things that, you know, I recognize as some of the work might make a change on, I've certainly highlighted and have been and will continue to go back to the right department heads on it. So yeah, if you'd like to, we can.
Because there's some areas too where we got to, we have to move on, but maybe one of us was not comfortable where the dollar level.
Exactly, we want to be sure that we can look at those and reach a consensus on whether we're gonna try to do something and if so, what we're gonna do, is it this year, is it, we've got to put this on the agenda for twenty-twenty-two kind of a thing. But those are decisions we can make at the time when we're looking at these.
And initially, we're not gonna look at everything. When are we gonna do the capital one, review of that?
We can do that at any time. I mean, this might be, we keep potentially covered in the working session on the third.
I think that that would be helpful because we will, we will have essentially cut the warrant at that point, so it'd be.
That's good, we shouldn't have any new ones. We shouldn't have any new ones for.
The third is the cutoff, Monday's the cutoff for the public to submit. Then the fourth, it would make sense and then take a look at what's been submitted, what we have internally that we've talked about in the capital. So I'll prepare that as well for you.
And I think it's a good enough idea, I think maybe leave with that because sometimes a sense of where we're going on the capital train could affect our sense of urgency on the operating.
No question about it.
So what I'll do is incorporate the rest of the fixes in the master, the master budget. I'll make sure that Kevin has that in his hands for the purposes of your meeting on this, on this February fourth. And then at that time, I'm looking at you'll be placing in recommendations under the TA slash board of selectmen's budget and then also recommendations on the items that are above guidelines. And also I'll make a space and then we'll, then we'll present that and that will go to, send, be sent back to you and to the finance committee.
And that'll be our V two at that point. And I'll talk with John because I know the twenty-seventh, he'll, and on the third, he'll be, already had two meetings with department heads to discuss.
Yes, so in the next three meetings of the, of the, actually four, four meetings of the finance committee, they have set for department head meetings.
Scheduled, you mean, right?
Yes, they're scheduled, yes.
So we'll end up being able to have an informed discussion with them, essentially having done the same thing here.
Yes.
This is new, I like it.
And when do you want us to get all the information to you so that you can get it back out to us in time to review any outstanding concerns?
Like tomorrow morning.
Tonight.
You go tonight.
Debbie's gonna say, what are you doing tonight?
No, I mean, the sooner, obviously, the better. But we'll, we'll take, if we get it the hour before we start to meet, we'll incorporate and we'll just, we'll go through as much as we can at that point, so.
I was gonna say, this will be a kind of a rolling collection of items and to the extent Debbie, you can alert Kevin and Catherine as necessary, these are the ones that have come in here so that we will at some point before that meeting have kind of a list of what they all are that have been submitted. Dick, you're getting, I apologize for keeping, you're getting back on Sunday before the third.
The third.
You're back on the third.
I'll be back for Monday the third, I'll come back on Monday.
You're taking your laptop with you?
I am trying to avoid.
I've never heard you not eat there.
Goes anywhere without.
But if you have, you know, to the extent you can put some of yours together beforehand and so on. But if the things that come up you think of or notice after you get back.
Yeah.
We still can open more on the fourth. I'm hoping we won't, it won't be all new stuff.
Lock it and stomp.
Yeah, no, no, exactly, I think we need to be flexible, so.
I'll try to get it to you this weekend. I'm going on Friday. So I'll try to get off my head then.
I hate to keep beating this horse to death, but I've mentioned before my concerns about steps and levels.
Well, that's, yeah, he's gonna give us an answer.
And I think we need to, we need to come to a sense of how we're gonna address that issue. Do we arbitrarily just say everybody gets two percent from here on out and forget the chart? Or do we cut everybody by one percent and we give them three? I mean, we gotta, we gotta be able to present the FinCom some kind of an approach. And that, that's a huge, that's a huge number.
Usually I find that, and again, it's true in this town or not, but usually the unions lead the non-union. In other words, non-union expects sort of the same kind of deal that the union gets usually. And at least in Massco, that was very much the case. And the key was to get, in our case, it was one particular union, the teachers. What we did do.
That hasn't been the case, that hasn't been the case in the last six years.
What we did do is we separate for new people.
Because we've got that, we've got that charter.
We can grandfather people, sometimes that's the least painful way to do it. It takes a decade before you're really realizing all the savings, but you try to change the underlying structure rather than, you know, basically take a pound of flesh out of everybody at one time, which.
Yeah, and so, you know, I, I, you know, I've said this all along, I've been very consistent with this, that, you know, when we talk about making a change around that, we should be process oriented and data driven. So it's gonna take a little work, I mean, there's third-party consultants. I'm not necessarily advocating that we need to even go that route. We take some time to pull together that type of information so that we can make an informed decision on what market is. I think at the very least, we either, you know, have the conversation and set sort of expectations, whether it's fiscal twenty-two, you know, these steps will be taken by the TA, a recommendation will be given and the changes associated will be discussed and approved. If the other end of that is, we are able to pull some good information in the meantime, which I don't know if I can do. I'm gonna be honest with you because everyone else is doing their budgets as well. And with everything else going on along with that. But I'll grab as much information as I can, look at historicals internally, that's something that we have at our fingertips. I've talked with our TA office and it's one of our priorities is to try to start reaching out to other communities. What we're also looking at doing is actually doing our own deep dive by going into websites of other, other communities and looking at their budgets and see if we can identify what the highway super's making there, whatever position is. The problem with that is though, you're limited to the dollar amount, you don't know what they're on a step in a grade structure and what step they might be on. So there's a lot that goes into it. You know, other TAs are very helpful when it comes to that. We've already started sending emails on a couple of positions internally. And I'll start gathering the information. I just don't know if we're able to land on something.
We could hit a bonanza in the sense that some other local town has done a recent study.
Yep.
And it's public record and we get a bunch of information. Again, it's not perfect, fewer information, it's against what they have or whatever.
Absolutely.
But if, we might find something like that and it would be great, that would be a goal one.
Yeah, I agree.
And Kevin, would you be able to have what the union contracts are as far as increases for our discussion, so when we're discussing?
For other, for other towns or for ours?
For ours, just basically, what's the structure of ours?
I don't know what the.
So we're two percent typically.
What is it?
It's a two percent increase typically right now, most, most.
Most of.
Steps, grades.
No, it'd be.
Just two percent.
No steps and grades.
So that's the annual increase. The steps and grade, the steps is a different thing and grades. And I think what would be helpful, I think what you're suggesting is we could have kind of the step and grade for each of the departments and so on, so we kind of know. How fast do people go if they don't do anything and there's no increase, you know, annual increase? Because the challenge always is that the annual increase is on top of any steps and so on and so forth. What we're trying to do is slow that combined acceleration, which is what's occurring so much.
Do the union contracts have steps and levels?
No.
No.
They don't now, okay.
It's just two percent.
The only steps and levels program is in.
Here.
Well, you learn something every day, thank you.
So I've started reaching out to them because with everything else, we're also have all of our collective bargaining that needs to take place as soon as possible. So I've reached out to the different unit representatives. I've met with some very preliminary, just to introduce myself. I haven't met with all yet. You know, that's why at this point we haven't inserted any of those estimates when it comes to the percentage increase of us.
So we're heading into union contracts where they've been getting two percent and our non-union have been getting four point seven five.
I know.
Yes.
Well, there's other things in the contracts too, though, like the SB contract had two percent, then half a year they had twenty-five percent.
Yeah, there's other things.
Stipends and things like that.
You have stipends and uniform allowances and, you know.
But they, no, they had like increase at six months too, so there are, you know, there are other things, just gotta look at the whole picture.
So I started by saying, the response, you know, at the very least, you know, we make sort of a statement that, you know, we're taking a hard line and look at what other communities are doing, what market is, and trying to do our due diligence over time. I see that as being helpful in my next step with the collective bargaining component of it. And that we've made, if we don't make, if we don't make a change, and I don't know if that's where we'd end up landing between FinCom yourselves and myself, at the very least, having that would be helpful when I get into the negotiating room, that there is gonna be some changes because I'd be shocked if that's not something that's at least brought up at some point.
I've never, I've, I don't recall that the unions, and I'm talking basically highway, water, parks and cemeteries. Police and fire. I don't recall that they've ever really commented to any great extent about the steps and levels program that exists in town hall.
I'm surprised.
They haven't said anything to me yet.
I don't, I don't know if I've ever.
Such a relief to hear, I'm so excited.
I've never heard that kind of comment, I don't think. And like Kevin said, it's typically 2%.
Well, just to give you an example, because Steve had mentioned today that they have, all their people are now in the ASME union.
Yeah.
Up until today, one person is getting paid at a step and grade, which is a couple dollars less than what he would, he will be getting in the union. He was at the highest level step and grade as a, as an employee. Because when he came on, he came on as, this is the person that was brought on last year as a new person, as a new employee to the, to the Parks and Cemetery. For some reason, I don't know why, I took some negotiation in terms of him getting into the union, which is, that's what's just happening, but his step and grade is a couple dollars less than what his union rate will be.
But he wasn't at the top of the steps, right?
Well, he was, because he.
Got hydrogen.
He got out hydrogen at the top, yeah.
Well, I think we have to look at the whole thing, and obviously, while the structures are different, we've got to look at sort of what the overall cost is, levels we have.
And then they get, like I said, it's, it's just, at the very least, we're creating a path, and trying to get our arms around it. Get data that can support whatever decisions we make. I'll work as hard as I can to try to pull as much information I can to help support that. Just with the timing of everything, I don't know when that will be.
Well, I think, what I think is important now is that the FinCom knows that we're on the same page as they are, because they recognize we gotta do something about it. We are recognizing we gotta do something about it, and we gotta start working on the process.
Yep, that's, that's right.
We may want to have a collaboration meeting at some point.
Yeah.
You know, just, A, I think it's really good to stay on the same track. B, it's gonna help a lot if there's a dozen of us all pushing the same direction, instead of two groups that are.
No question.
Similar, but not the same.
Sure, sure.
So, good.
And I don't think that's gonna be an issue, because I know that they're on that same pitch.
Is there anything else?
Thank you, this was my first time going through this process with you all. And I appreciate the, the conversation, a chance to kind of bring the department through to speak with you, and myself to.
Now you're gonna tell us it's not as big as you thought it was gonna be.
I said, I said this.
Of course. A lot of hours, a lot of hours.
I wouldn't, reflecting, I wouldn't have wanted to join the team at any other time, this is the best time to do it.
It's a great learning process. Everybody's looking at every line item anyway, so.
And you're gonna look with the budget, actually.
And that's, that's, I'd rather be, you know, at this point in the process involved than not, so. I was talking to another town administrator at the rec the other day, when I was up there, and we were talking about timing. He started in June in his community, and he said, he goes, this is great. A bunch to do. He goes, I can only imagine what it's like starting in the summer, he said, it's been good. The best part of it, though, and I, I'm not just saying this, it's been the, the team and everybody sort of rallying and pulling together, knowing I'm sort of getting on boarded, and Catherine, her support and work through this budget, because every community is a little different how they do it, bringing in.
Good team, in my opinion.
Kevin, what was our increase in budget last year, percentage increase, trying to compare against where we're.
The overall, you're saying?
Overall.
Whether or without school?
Uh, let's go without, no, this includes school, right?
With schools, what, textbooks?
With school, because that's where at the end with.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've been, I've been updating that since we first did that last, first time.
About 4.4?
Yeah.
That includes Donnie Bristle, 400,000.
Yeah.
So without that, it would have been, it would have been a 4.6.
Well, Donnie Bristle wasn't included in the budget.
No.
Because it was a capital exclusion, so it was, it wouldn't include that.
But the return of it, it hit the tag, the total amount to be raised.
It's, yeah, it's still mine.
The FinCom, one more thing.
Okay, yeah.
I appreciate, thank you, Kevin, very much. I'm looking at the time, I'd like us all to get home, and remind our families that we are still alive and living, and to be able to do a supper at normal times. However, we have one piece of business before the ultimate motion, and that is minutes of Monday, January 6th, 2020. Somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Dick abstains. So, and that was due to your, we weren't here yet, so that's great, so. That done, we are ready for the best motion of the day.
Who's your adjournment?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.